Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our July 11, 2023 Phoenixville Borough Council meeting. Tonight, we are conducting our monthly Borough Council meeting, both in person and virtually. We're glad you've joined us for this meeting tonight. During the public participation and public hearing portions of tonight's agenda, community members joining us via Zoom may raise their hand digitally, and our staff will unmute your microphone and announce your name. You will then be able to speak to council. We will start with members of the public who are here in the council chambers with us tonight, and then those joining us remotely. We will have two public comment periods tonight, one towards the beginning, one towards the end. And we ask the participation be limited to once per each session. With that, thank you for joining us tonight. We will now begin with the Pledge of Allegiance and moment of silence. With that, we'll start with roll call. Ms. Berkeley.
Present.
Mr. Carmenito.
Present.
Ms. Dugan. Mr. Kirkner. Mr. Moore.
Here.
Ms. Webb.
Yeah.
Mr. Weiss. Mr. Evil.
Here.
Mr. Mayor.
Here.
Manager's here, assistant manager's excused, chief of police is here, solicitor's here, you have a court. Thank you. And tonight, Mr. Kirkner and Mr. Weiss are both excused absent, not able to attend in person or online tonight. So. With that, we'll move right into section three of tonight's agenda, which is presentations. First off, we have a presentation by Ms. Mackenzie Freeze. If you'd like to. I believe Jen can tee up a presentation for you. There we go. And welcome.
Okay. Hi, thank you for having me. Hi, everyone. My name is Mackenzie Free. And I'm a speech language pathologist here in Phoenixville. I have, I know I've talked about this before, so I have a proposal to put a communication board sign in Reeves Park. And the purpose of this sign, it's called Communication Board, or some people refer to it as AAC boards, meaning it's an alternative form of communication. So the purpose of this sign is to provide kids or individuals access to a different method of communication, whether that be outside of talking. A lot of students that I work with, who have different speech and language things going on, use this method of communication or use something like an iPad as their way of expressing their wants and needs. So this is a board that would be placed on the fence on a vinyl backing on Reeves Park, in Reeves Park. And I customized the board to have some specific equipment that is there, and some different action words. It has location words, some basic things like wants and needs for going to the bathroom, water, eating. It has pronouns on there for identifying different people and some different social words. On the right, you'll also see the ABCs in sign language and 1-2-3s, as well as the ABC letters and numbers. To the left are logos on the top left corner. And on the top right corner, there's a small QR code that brings you to the website of the developers of the sign, and has a little description about the whole purpose, which again is for access and awareness for students or individuals who use AAC. The idea would also be that it could be used as a teaching tool as well, whether that is for caregivers of the kids or people like me, speech language pathologists, teachers that are at the park.
And I know this has come through Parks and Rec already, so I know several of you have already seen the presentation. So in the interest of time, is there any questions on the presentation? Yes, Mr. Crack.
If I might, you've indicated in the interest of this that you're willingly contributing the, this particular sign. And then if the borough wanted to move forward, the borough would do it on its own, but this one is totally contributed by you.
Yes, sorry. I would be able to donate this from my practice outright for the vinyl sign. And depending on how that lasts or how it goes, a more substantial sign that would be mounted in the ground would require a bit more funding. And but I'd be happy to keep kind of exploring that option and even other spots in Phoenixville where it might be a good idea.
So currently, we're looking at a vinyl sign for the fence, which I think is great to. We, I was very involved with the All Abilities Playground, and you and I have spoken before. And I probably have the most experience, while I'm not a speech therapist, I've been working for 20 years with kids with special needs, non-vocal learners, learners that use augmented communication, like you do, Mrs. Free. So I think having it like this, this is a very big field. It's got a lot of language. It's a lot to scan. But I think having a little bit of something for everybody, and that's, I believe, why you customized it this way would be good. If we were to move to something more permanent, I would want to like have conversations about what makes sense, what makes sense for the population that's there. But I think in general terms, this is a great start. It's something that we looked at doing something more permanently in the park. But for a variety of reasons, we just didn't move forward. So I love the fact that you're taking like your energy and your passion for it and brought it to us. And I think knowing that it's going to be not, we're not making that huge investment yet. This is a great way to see how it's utilized, see what kids do with it, talk with maybe some other groups, see how practitioners like yourself are utilizing it. And then if we were to go to something more formal, like a more permanent, bigger investment, you know, and your generosity is certainly greatly appreciated. I think that that's a really great way to look at it. So thank you.
Yeah.
And that's kind of where I would just kind of want to make sure I said my little piece about my experience as a clinician. And again, thank you. I'm not a speech therapist, so I don't want to take away from all your expertise. But I do think if we looked at something more permanent in the future, we would want to have a little bit more dialogue about exactly what we are selecting. But I think this is a wonderful way to see how the population looks at it and utilizes it.
Thank you. I did put on the bottom, it's obviously very small in this picture, the sign is much bigger. There are the Spanish translations, but in the future, there would be definitely customization, whether or not like we want to keep or include what's on the sides and just make the sign, the icons bigger themselves. There's a lot you can customize all the specific vocabulary within there.
And what size is a?
It is.
I'd just like to offer, I really appreciate it. Parks and Rec Committee already had a chance, and we approved it, really liked it. Appreciate you, you know, helping carry forward the mission of the All Abilities Playground. Anybody can attest to the fact that it's got to be one of the busiest places in the borough. I mean, I've never seen it not being utilized. So giving people who are in the playground who have, who can use this will be one more step to showing how we care here. So I appreciate it.
Thanks.
Any other questions or comments from council? Okay, thank you.
Thank you, everyone.
Make a motion.
Absolutely. That's next up.
I'd like to make a motion to accept the donation of the Augmentative and Alternative Communication Sign to the Borough by Free Speech to be placed in the All Abilities Playground at Reeves Park, with content there on approved by the Borough Parks and Recreation Department.
Second.
I think Dana won that one. So motion by Mr. Moore, second by Ms. Dugan. Questions on the motion? Seeing none of those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. Thank you, Mrs. Freeze. With that, we'll move on to the first round of public participation. Those joining us in person, if you, we will take comment from the podium tonight. If you step up to the microphone, there is a form on the podium for filling out your name and address. If you're joining us virtually tonight, please raise your hand digitally. And when we get to, once we work through the crowd that's in the room, we will then move on to our folks joining us digitally.
Good evening. I'm Dennis Finch, the marker. I had a long and a short version of what I wanted to talk about tonight. I'll take the short version and spare you. But I came from North Braddock, and I lived there until I just couldn't take it anymore. It wasn't a very good community to live in. And the place that I lived at, they just happened to have a motor there. It stayed in the alley, and I used to come out the door and watch the rat run around the alley, and I never could get rid of it. And that is why I hate coming home and seeing six or more cars parked in front of the number forty house. And they're all strategically moved and maneuvered so that that section of the road is just not feasible for people to use. And many of the people that I watched get out of their cars and park at the end of the lane, they've worked hard all day. And I think they do deserve a little better than what they're getting. Over the years, I've trapped many of the animals that come across the street from that number forty house. And I've come to realize that the longer a car sits idle, the easier it is for a rat to figure out, hey, I'm safe here. And as long as they feel safe, they're gonna, they're gonna move in. That's another reason I don't like looking over out of my front door and looking at six cars parked right in front of my house. It's just, it's not something I ever looked ahead to see, because when I moved in, it wasn't like this. And I'm just hoping that something can be done. I have no intentions of not continuing this struggle to get this turned around. Thank you very much for your time, and thank you all for coming out. I know you all were, many of you do. And I know how hard it is to just drop what you're doing and come to the meeting. So thank you.
Thank you, Dennis.
Good evening. I'm Bill Wetstein from 18 Walnut Street. I come here tonight to propose a viable solution for the lack of parking on East Walnut Street from Dean to Main Streets. By approving these policy changes and police action presented here tonight, I believe the borough and the sanctity of the East Walnut Street residents will be well served. I discussed many of these with my fellow neighbors, and we respectfully offer the following. We propose zone eight permitting be introduced along East Walnut Street and East Hall Street from Jackson to Main Street. We trust an exemption for the Presbyterian Church parishioners and the employees that may park on East Walnut Street can be agreed upon. With a portion of the proceeds from the increased in zone eight permitting owners of nonessential vehicles, in other words, vehicles that people don't normally use, can be urged by the borough to apply for parking at the first Presbyterian Church lot on Main Street free of charge. I would estimate this would only be maybe three cars, if any. We propose zone eight permitting to be amended from two per household for homeowners instead of the current three. Vehicle owners that have been granted a third permit in the past can retain it, provided they use the church law option previously stated, or previously stated for one of those three vehicles. We propose that all vehicles parked on East Walnut Street be in compliance with Pennsylvania Vehicle Codes regarding inspection, registration, and insurance. While I walked down Walnut Street just last week, I noticed three vehicles that were grossly out of inspection. Prior to issuing a zone eight permit, we propose that the borough amend the proof of residency requirement to only a PH driver's license that matches the address on the application. We request that residents of any new housing developments within a two-block radius of Walnut Street not be issued a zone eight parking permit in the future. Well, that being said, we generally have no issue as a neighborhood with the development of Phoenixville. We're simply asking the borough that the borough help some of the residents that supported these efforts. I'd be more than happy to help the borough, the police, or the church with this effort. Thank you very much, gentlemen and ladies.
And just as a follow-up, so July 25th will be our policy meeting here at seven, and that's where we talk about all things parking.
Even minor stuff.
Yep, all the stuff.
And to, for the record, this is, I'm not going borough-wide on this. This is specific, and maybe a model for other troubled streets and maybe dealing with the same situation.
Sure. Both John and I represent that ward. So you're in our neighborhood, and I sit on policy committee. So if you want to email me between now and that meeting that John mentioned, I'm just B Berkeley, my last name, at phoenixville.org, and we can kind of correspond a little bit, talk and invite you to that meeting as well.
Wonderful. Should I, should I come anyway, or?
If you want to send me kind of your list of things prior, you're more than welcome to do that as well.
Thank you very much, Ms. Berkeley. Thank you.
Hi, everyone. My name is Paul Dungy. I live at 324 Bridge Street, right across the way. I'm here about the flagpole situation, and I wanted to, I've been asking a lot of questions, getting no responses. So I'm going to put the questions to everyone, and then I'm going to go away. Gene, remember, we walked, I walked up to you on the street, asked you why you hate our town. Your reply was what? Because of people like you, and then you laughed at me. I asked you to fix the flagpole situation. Your response, I don't know what flagpole you're talking about. I continued to follow you down to Borough Hall. I told you I was there to clarify the flagpole outside the building that you work in, where we are right now. Told you about my brother, and that's a memorial day. I walked for 15 miles because of flag situation. And that was, I was angry and at you, Mr. Veteran. And then the journey began. You're Beth? Nice to meet you. Beth, I've been corresponding with you. You replied to me once. You want to know what you said to me? I sent you a video of my brother's grave. I provided you my address and my phone number. Solution is simple. Tuesday at 6:25, 54, you responded. Thank you for reaching out, Mr. Dungy. I appreciate the sacrifice your brother made and his sacrifice to our country. We are looking at the pricing of a three-pole arrangement. Side note, today's 7/11. Amazon Prime Day. You can get a real good bargain. Shop. Mr., my response, this is disappointing event. It's both insulting and embarrassing as a gay man. I will be out in front of the building until both flags get the respect I hope is your intention. Please represent us all. Question mark and exclamation point. Saturday, 6:24, confusing traffic video. Stop signs were there. They weren't there. They were there. They weren't there. Then they were gone. No big deal, but people were confused. Also, the video of the sidewalk with the dog do. You didn't respond to that either. Where's the Board of Health? And a copy of the Borough Ordinance about the lighting pole? I have it here if anyone wants to see it. Let's move on to 6:28. This is not about genitalia. This is, however, about heart. And where's yours, was what I asked you. No response. Thursday, 6:29, a message to you. Police reports of me being attacked verbally. I sent them to you. And with the attack with the man that spit on me. Please don't allow me to be injured again. Again, no response. 7:02, you say, everyone, I'm still waiting for my voice to be heard. Period. Again, no response. 7:04, Independence Day. I said, and the wave is coming. I'm not going to be disappointed or denied. No response. Wednesday, there are four. I want one and waiting. Two, speak publicly and properly. Three, truth provides people. Four, stop the hate. Period. Five, thanks for a question mark. No response from you. Thursday's police report incident that I sent to you. Once again, please do the right things and keep your and the Borough Manager, Crack, promise of the three poles. You said that to me in a text. I have it on my phone. Mayor Pete, how are you? Nice to meet you kindly. I voted for you. I think you're doing a pretty good job. This needs to be handled. Thursday, 6:29, I sent you four photos, and I said, please don't allow me to be injured. Please, you have, you've let me down. I've been attacked twice. You have let me down twice. I voted for you. Two, please stop this. Only you can. You can. Sorry, I didn't hear you. Leaders love and lead. You say, everyone, I'm still waiting, still waiting, still waiting. And wait, it was number four. Wednesday, last week. So I have been strongly attacked for just being a simple human being. I had to run again. I'm scared but not afraid. When do I matter? When? No response. Thursday, police incident report sent to you again. Again, I asked why I haven't been, I have to be harassed. Why? Friday, 6:30, your silence is deafening. I'm going to expose you and explain who you really are. Yours in service, Paul Ree Queer, R-E hyphen Queer. Thank you. And I have one more question. People have been telling me something about, did you play pool at the Polish Club? You went to the drag show? And is your police handle Grey Goose? These are the things I'd like to know. I've got no answers. Now everyone knows the questions. Please do your jobs. Thank you all. I love you.
Good evening, council. You all know me, Third Avenue, and I'm a big supporter of council, and especially the.
If you can just state your name, though.
Oh, Rodney Platt. I'm sorry. Thank you. Yeah, and I'm really excited about the, the plastic ordinance ban. But I am not happy with the, the add-on, the change with, for the biodegradable. Whereas it may not really do any harm, official, physical harm. It doesn't change the habits, and that's the number one, number one change or goal, really, in, in an ordinance is changing habits. And why, first, why are we doing, why are we banning single-use plastic bags? Well, to keep them out of the environment, reduce the use of plastic, and change habits. And the changing habits is the key to making it work. You don't want to be constantly having customers pay the extra quarter to, to, to get a heavier plastic bag or to get the paper bag. You want them to bring in the reusable bag. That's the gulf. That, that is the solution. If you're, if you've got a biodegradable bag, it looks so much like the regular, regular bag. It's not registering in the average person's brain. And it's a sham, because we know it's not, it's not going to be able to biodegrade, probably. I mean, in the general environment, it, it might biodegrade two to four years. It might in the best situations, but more than likely it'll end up in the landfill with all the older, single-use plastic bags. So it hasn't had a chance to really work the way it was designed to be. And so it's, it's kind of a lie. And I want the, I want the residents of Phoenixville to be told the truth fully and to engage in the right habits. And I'm going to back up council by helping engage the businesses to do that. I've already promised Mr. Ewald and Ms. Berkeley to do that, and we have the structure to do that with Phoenixville Area Transition and the Green Teams. That's all. Thank you.
Hello, everybody. Thank you for having me be able to come up here and kind of speak. I know it's something that you mentioned that we're on top of further, kind of in that policy agenda and meeting later. But I just wanted to back kind of what Bill said. I wanted to kind of follow up, follow him when he came up here, but I was beat there first. But yeah, I just really wanted to back what he says. I only lived a few houses down from him, and, you know, parking has really been an issue. Even though, you know, we've, me and my wife are, you know, freshly in Phoenixville, I've been here about a year and a half. And we've loved our experience there. The only complaint that we had has been is the parking. And so, yeah, we've, we've talked about it many times, and we really, you know, hopefully that we can kind of find a solution. My wife is actually a nurse at the Phoenixville Hospital. I mean, she does a really great job. But just, you know, some nights, just because of her work schedule, she ends up having to work really, really late. And then, you know, she has to walk, you know, several blocks at times to try to get home, right? And then, you know, then I had to stay up, I stay up, you know, late just to make sure she gets home okay and everything else like that. And so, you know, that's, that's just one, one of my example, my personal example, right, with my wife, right? But yeah, my, my hope is that, you know, we can kind of find a solution. So thank you.
What was your name?
Ty Kaiser.
I took too fast, sorry. Any members of the public wishing to make public comment via Zoom? If you want to raise your hand digitally, now would be the time to do so. And any members still in the room, if there's anybody else?
Luca, I've turned on your microphone.
Tom, if you're speaking, we can't hear you.
Yeah, no, I'm sorry. I didn't realize I was on.
There we go.
Good evening. I noticed there is a budget transfer this evening that's part of a whole group of finance recommendations. And this one is for the $100,000 transfer for additional legal fees related to the K-Center lawsuit. Since you guys really don't discuss those details, I'm going to go out on a limb and suggest that the lawsuit is about the arbitrary zoning ordinance change, which, you know, now prevents the school district's buyer to utilize that property the way they see fit. I think it's important that council go back and look at those actions, the steps that occurred prior to that. Who made those recommendations to you to make that, to approve that ordinance change? I think at minimum, that person's credibility should take a hit. But ultimately, the decisions lie with you, council. The buck stops with you guys. And now you're in a prolonged lawsuit with the district. And it may appear that we have two government agencies with deep pockets. But unfortunately, what we're really dealing with is Phoenixville taxpayers' shallow pockets, where the borough, per se, may be reaching into the taxpayer's left pocket to pay for legal fees. At the same time, the school district is reaching into the taxpayer's white pocket to pay for these legal fees. And I think it's critical that you guys consider, I know it's hard to consider, you know, every possible consequence of your actions. But this one, I think you had hindsight of. And I think it's, you know, it's just important for the community and the tax base that you guys make the best decisions that you can make. You're each individuals. You have your own life experiences. You have common sense. You have logic. You need to utilize those and these critical decisions. That's all. Thank you.
Any other members on Zoom wishing to make public comments tonight? Or any members in the room? Thank you. With that, we'll close the first round of public participation, moving on with our agenda here. Up next, we have our consent agenda. Various items have moved through all of our committees for consideration in one fell swoop. Any items, any members of Council wishes to pull from the consent agenda? Seeing none, what is Council's pleasure?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second.
We have motion to approve by Ms. Berkeley, second by Ms. Webb. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero. With that, we'll move on to section six of tonight's agenda, which is communications and council participation. Ms. Dugan?
I actually have something to tell you.
Fantastic.
Um, I had the privilege of attending the, the mental health fund day a couple of weeks ago. And it was fantastic. It was really well attended. The PAL was there, they had boxing. There were darkened room that you could get massages in. They were selling, not, well, I guess maybe they were, but they were giving away essential oils. There were like stress balls. They even had this awesome, the kind of like an example of what we're doing with the. The fresh to you mobile market, how they would show you, like there was a meal that they would make and you could actually. Buy the, the ingredients for it, not that day, but showing you what it was. I tried it, it was so good. I could have like, I could have stayed there and just kept eating it. There was, it was so much fun. They had dogs for the yoga, the puppy yoga. They were adoptable dogs and they even had a pony. I got to pet a pony. It was like something like an, any eight year old dreams of. It was so much fun and I really hope that we continue to do that. Event in the future because I thought it was so successful and I was impressed by the number of people who came out. Thanks.
Thank you.
I just wanted to thank Planning Commission in honor of Bill Davidson. They did join in a bench right at the head of the Schueller of a trailer where it connects to the walkway of the foundry. And we had a nice group dedicate that bench and say a little remembrance of Bill. He did a lot for the borough as part of planning, as part of our HRC and just in the revitalization. So I just wanted to thank Planning Commission for that nice act in his honor.
I, I will second that with the appreciation for planning and staff and Beth for putting the other, the unveiling with, with a group of friends. So it was a nice moment to, to, to pay tribute to Bill. And I think we all miss him and his expertise that he brought to the field. I also, there's normally Mr. Kirkland would take care of this, but we did have one passing of, of a former borough staff member. I think he served forty five years in the water department. We did lose Andy Fabian. This past month, Andy was forty five years. Is a tremendous commitment to the borough and we absolutely appreciate that everything he's, he did for us and, and the department that he, he really helped build. So he is missed and, and our thoughts with his family. Any other counsel communication or participation tonight? With that, Mr. Ursler, Mayor's report.
Thank you so much, Mr. President. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for those of you who are joining us in the room and those of you who are joining us virtually. A couple of things from events that have happened this last month since our last meeting. Just a shout out to the entire group that helped to plan our Juneteenth. It was an extraordinary celebration, right? Within the downtown, it took place on June eighteenth, of course, because June nineteenth was actually Monday. So it was nice to be able to celebrate as a community that weekend. And that's a special thanks to Blacklight Projects, Diversity in Action, our Social Concerns Committee, Orion Communities, and a number of other organizations that helped to plan that event. It's just an incredible event that has continued to grow a year after year. I'd highly encourage everyone to attend next year. Also, a very special shout out to Anne's Heart. They had their Dinner on Vert program, which is a secretive pop up gala. It's all vegan food. I mean, it took place this year at Jaeger's Farm right down the street. Also, you know, in conjunction, as Dana said, the Mental Health Fund Day was one of the big supporters was the Phoenixville Hospital. They actually had this last month, also their hospital thrift shop granting a day. So for those of you who may not know, the thrift shop actually contributes more than forty five thousand dollars every year to nonprofits within our community. So it's all volunteer run, certainly the clothes that are donated, you know, thank you to those who make donations. But they actually give about forty five thousand dollars back to probably twenty organizations within our community. Also, in addition to that, I just want everyone to know it is an extraordinary thrift shop. It actually moved from Church Street up to where the bookworm was next to the hospital. So there's a home, looks like a residential home on the hospital property, which on, which Main Street, that's right. Thank you, on Main Street and the new, the thrift shop is there and it's a beautiful space. So I would definitely encourage people. The other thing that they do, I think that's really special is they work with nonprofits. And if a nonprofit has a guest that needs clothing, they'll give free vouchers. So people can go and actually pick out clothing. So an incredible selection of clothing, highly suggest go and check it out. I also wanted to thank, we actually, I was able to attend on our behalf, the Governor's Pride Event in Harrisburg. And that was a really exciting event two weeks ago. We also want to give a special shout out to Bistro on Bridge. Every month they do a special nonprofit supported by their egg roll sales or a different food sales. And this month, it was actually the Police Equipment Fund as well as PAL, our Police Athletic League that takes place at the rec center. So very special shout out to Bistro. Thank you for that generosity. Yesterday, we had a very special event that took place at the Exton Library and it was actually the Pennsylvania Human Relations Commission. Our HRC was the twelfth in the Commonwealth. And so it's exciting to see some of the programs as well as the resources that are available to our HRC as well as our community partners. Upcoming, we have Blob Fest coming up this weekend, so please beware of the blob. Put on your tinfoil hats and be careful. Also, we have rhythm and bruise coming up on the twenty second. La Ferie or the fair, the festival is taking place on the twenty ninth. And that's done in conjunction by alliances to Phoenixville. Also, our National Night Out is taking place on August first from six to nine P M. And that will be at the rec center and that's done in conjunction with Town Watch and our Phoenixville Police Department. Outside of that, I think those are all the updates I have. Thank you all. I hope you're all having a very safe and happy summer and be safe.
I am so sorry, I forgot a very special announcement. On Friday, July twenty first, Mrs. Claus will be making an appearance on Bridge Streets to celebrate Christmas in July. We'll be highlighting some of the things that will be happening during the holidays. And I heard she invited Santa as well. So there'll be several things for kids throughout the, the evening and some giveaways and things like that. So come out and celebrate Christmas in July.
Thank you. Thank you, Beth. Thank you, Peter. Under item eight on tonight's agenda, we have appointments. We don't have any candidates for any openings at the moment, but we do have standing openings with Harb, Zoning and Human Relations Commission. If any members of the public that live in Phoenixville Borough would like to take part in any of our boards, committees or commissions, please reach out to your borough councilperson or borough staff will be happy to walk you through the process and get you involved. With that, we will be taking, we will need to step into executive session.
Motion to recess to executive session.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Ms. Webb. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero. We'll return after this. Should we need a motion to resume?
So moved.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Ms. Webb. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. And.
Just note that Borough Council had an executive session to discuss a personnel matter.
Thank you. All right, so we are back. And with that. Find my place again. Our first item of business as we return, we're in section nine of tonight's agenda, which is new business. We're the start of section nine. Under item A, we have an item from our wastewater, we have a budget increase. I think Ms. Dugan, you were going to handle this one?
Yeah, I got it. I'm making a motion to approve the budget increase twenty twenty three dash zero two three in the amount of twenty four thousand eight hundred from wastewater fund balance to sewer pumping system, repair and maintenance supplies for emergency replacement and upgrade of the P L C system at Ashland Street Pumping Station.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Dugan, second by Ms. Berkeley. Questions on this item for budget increase? This is an emergency item that was required. Yep. Seeing no questions on the motion, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries six zero. Under item B tonight on new business, we have a motion to approve a conditional police officer offer of employment. Ms. Berkeley?
Yes, so I will make a motion to make the offer of a police patrol officer to Brian N. White, conditional unsatisfactory background check, psychiatric evaluation and medical evaluation.
Second.
With a motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Ms. Webb. Questions on this motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries six zero. Congratulations and looking forward to next month with a. With a ceremony, hopefully. With that, we'll move into section ten of tonight's agenda. We have resolutions and ordinances. We have one, we have one ordinance to adopt. What is Council's pleasure on the right of way dedication for nineteen East Grant Street?
I will make a motion to adopt an ordinance at acceptance of the road dedications of nineteen East Grant Street.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Ms. Webb. Questions on the motion for the right of way acceptance? This was scheduled and advertised. All legal processes, seeing no questions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries six zero. Which takes us to section eleven of tonight's agenda, our public hearings. What is Council's pleasure on this item?
Mr. President, I'll make a motion to recess the public meeting and reopen the hearing on the conditional use application from M E K two Property Group LLC to develop an adaptive reuse in the existing building located at one twenty three Main Street on the track to be a multifamily residential building having eighteen dwelling units, fifteen parking spaces and eighty five percent impervious coverage.
Second.
With a motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Mr. Moore for, to recess into a public, recess the public meeting and open a hearing. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries six zero. Turn this over, solicitor.
Thank you. As Council knows, this hearing was opened and commenced at Council's last meeting on June thirteenth, twenty twenty three. The application relates to an adaptive reuse of the existing improvements on the property into a multifamily building with eighteen single bedroom apartment dwelling units, fifteen parking spaces and eighty five percent impervious coverage while maintaining the historic character of the existing structure on the property, which uses permitted on conditional use approval in accordance with section twenty seven dash three oh one, two A, two G of the borough zoning ordinance. Exhibits and testimony were presented by the borough and the applicant. No other parties came forth and the public was permitted the right to provide public comment at that time. Hearing was continued to the record of this evening. This time the record is closed and no more background or testimony will be provided. But I see Council for the applicant, Mr. Murray is here and we'll give him the opportunity to make a closing statement if he likes.
Thank you. Uh, yes, thank you. I don't have much to say. I, I thank for the opportunity in presenting our case at the last meeting. And the applicant looks forward to working through the land development process in a collaborative effort with Borough Council to save this historic structure as an adaptive reuse. So we, we hope you grant the conditional use. Thank you.
That will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
I'll make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Berkeley, second by Ms. Webb to close the public hearing. Uh, any questions? Seeing no questions, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries six zero.
If I could just mention that Council also had an executive session to consider this application earlier this evening. I understand that Council is prepared to render a decision on the M E K two Property Group LLC conditional use application.
Ms. Webb?
I make a motion that the Phoenixville Borough Council approve the conditional use application of M E K two Property Group LLC to permit the adaptive reuse of the existing improvements on one twenty three Main Street while maintaining the historic character of the existing structure on the property with the following incentives. Use of the existing structure, use of the existing structure on the property as a multifamily residential structure, use of the structure for no more than eighteen units being approximately eight hundred and thirty square feet per unit and an impervious coverage no greater than eighty five percent of the total property area. Which approval shall be subject to the following conditions. Based on the demonstrated importance of the historical character of the structure on the property, the adaptive reuse of the structure on the property shall be subject to chapter twelve Historic District of the Borough's ordinances and as required thereunder, shall submit an application and receive approval as if the property was located in the Borough's downtown historic district. The historical cornice located along Main Street facing side of the structure shall be preserved. The multifamily dwelling structure shall consist of no more than eighteen units, including no less than two ADA accessible units and the impervious area on the property shall be no greater than eighty five percent. The parking areas for the adaptive reuse shall be expanded no farther into the front yards than depicted on exhibit A seven. The landscaping shall be consistent with exhibit A eight unless otherwise required through the land development process. The trash enclosure, enclosure shall be fully screened by an enclosure satisfactory to the borough and consistent with the borough subdivision and land development ordinance. The adaptive reuse shall include either an accessible elevator providing access from the two ADA accessible dwelling units to the common laundry area or an accessible washer and dryer in each of the two ADA accessible dwelling units. The adaptive reuse shall include no less than two of the parking spaces along Hall Street shall be handicapped accessible and compliant with the requirements of the Americans with Disabilities Act. The only addition to the existing structure on the property shall be the proposed stair tower in the Jackson Street front yard of the property. Nothing in this decision and order of Borough Council on this application shall be a waiver of any applicable ordinance and no level of development is guaranteed by this approval. All development permitted by this conditional approval shall be consistent with the testimony and exhibit submitted to Borough Council at the hearings held on June thirteenth, twenty twenty three and July eleventh, twenty twenty three. In addition to the extent necessary, any relief of the required parking requested as a part of the application is denied as moot.
Second.
The motion by Ms. Webb, second by Mr. Moore. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries six zero.
Thank you.
Mr. Murray, written decision will be forwarded to you within time period provided municipalities planning code.
Very good. Have a good evening, Earl.
Thank you, Mike. With that, we'll move on to section twelve of tonight's agenda, reports of committees, boards and commissions. First up, we have Planning Commission with Mr. Moore.
Uh, nothing to report as there was no June meeting. July meeting has been scheduled, rescheduled from. Seven thirteen to Thursday, seven twenty seven at six, six P M.
Thank you. Ms. Dugan with Harb? Great. I don't believe there's anything to report out of the Phoenixville Regional Planning Committee. Mr. Kirkland is not here to report out, so moving on, Ms. Dugan with Rec Board.
All right, I've got lots today, seven pages worth.
Wow.
So here we go. We have a lot of fun stuff coming up. Uh, the Parents Night Out, it's Gloga, a, the Blob Fest Party. That's Friday, July fourteenth from five thirty to eight thirty for ages four to twelve. The senior, Healthy Senior Seminar, that's a free event focused on I this time. And that will be Wednesday, July twelfth at eleven A M. The Fresh to You Mobile Market is again, they'll be here through November eighth on every Wednesday from ten A M. to twelve thirty P M. Blood pressure and screenings with a nurse on site. It's every third Tuesday, five thirty to six thirty. We are having another blood drive on August thirtieth from one, one P M. to six P M. The National Night Out is another free event. And that is Tuesday, August first from six to nine. And we'll move into programs. We've got the Young Rembrandt is mixed media drawing and cartooning for ages six to twelve. That's July thirty first to August fourth. Or the August fourteenth to the eighteenth are two different ones. And then there's the Youth Yoga Mini Camp, August fourteenth to the eighteenth or August twenty first to the fifteenth. Quad Ball, which is Quidditch Camp, August twenty first. August twenty first to the twenty fifth, uh, from nine A M. To twelve P M. For grades four to six. Um, and then one to four for seven to twelve. The twenty twenty three tennis clinic and Orange Crush tournament. That's Monday to Friday, August, I am sorry, July tenth to July twenty eighth, with the tournament being on July thirty first. For grades two to twelve. Uh, the youth flag football summer camp, that's August thirty first to August fourth. From nine A M. To one P M. For ages six to thirteen. Fundamentals of tennis, that would be at the Fisher Court Courts at Manavon Park. And that's Monday to Thursday for four days, July thirty first to August third from nine A M. To twelve P M. For ages seven to thirteen. We have, uh, we're offering a skate camp. Uh, for both new and moderately experienced skateboarders. Um, this is at the Upper Providence Skate Park, one, two, eight, six Black Rock Road. Uh, July twenty fourth to twenty eighth or the another one from August fourteenth to the eighteenth. From nine A M. To twelve P M. Ages seven to thirteen. Um, we have science explorers. We've got several of those. We've got the potion powders, polymers academy, far out space academy. Junior investigation team. If you're interested, I recommend checking out the website for specifics on all those. The Jump Start Sports Camp. That's August seventh to eleventh from nine A M. To three P M. Then. Down. Up there. And August fourteenth to August eighteen. Summer, uh, basketball summer camp. Uh, that is August twenty first to August twenty fifth from nine P M. I'm sorry, nine A M. To one P M. And Snapology, this one involves Legos. There's several different versions of that. Again, check out the website. Youth Coed NFL Flag Football Training Academy and Clinic. That is Mondays, July twenty fourth to August twenty eighth from six thirty P M. To eight o'clock for ages six to twelve. Pickleball Junior Clinic, that is July tenth to August tenth. From three to four P M. And that's the Monday sessions. And then there's a Friday sessions on from July fourteenth to August eighteen. Phoenixville Recreation Youth Basketball League for the fall that begins September sixth goes through October twenty fifth from five P M. To. From starting, uh, from September sixth to October twenty fifth, starting at five P M. Grage it grades, uh, three to twelve. Badminton Clinic, that is going to be Saturdays. Uh, starting in July first to the twenty ninth from ten A M. To eleven A M. Uh, circuit class with cores, July twelfth to August sixteenth, six P M. To six forty five P M. Uh, that has a drop in fee, so you don't have to sign up for that. You can just drop in. Uh, key gong, that's Fridays from July seventh to July twenty eighth from ten A M. To eleven A M. Pickleball clinics are at Fisher Courts. And that's Tuesdays from July eleventh to August fifteenth. There are different times for beginner, intermediate or advanced. And finally, monthly yoga workshops and specialty is this one for, uh, the July twenty third one from four thirty to six o'clock. Is key gong and medicinal breath and. Uh, August thirteenth is. A wellness. Um, and that's all I have this time.
Thank you, Dana. And that's available on the website as well?
Yes.
Very, very good. Uh, moving on, Miss Berkeley with T A C.
No action to report. We will meet again. It is the seventh of August.
Very good. Uh, moving on to section thirteen, uh, Miss Berkeley with Personnel and Public Safety.
Again, no action to report and we will meet the same day. Prior to tack.
Great. Uh, Mister Moore, Parks and Rec Board.
Um, all actions have been dealt with already, the approval of the, um, uh, the, um. Uh, the board at the beginning of the meeting and also everything else was covered under the, um, the consent agenda.
Very good. We'll move back to Miss Berkeley to cover Policy Committee.
Yes, uh, Mister President, I'd like to make a motion to schedule and advertise an ordinance amending chapter ten. Health and safety by adding new part five plastics. Second.
Motion by Miss Berkeley, second by Miss Webb. Questions on the motion?
I have a question.
Yes, true.
Actually, I've got a lot of questions.
True.
Now, I'm a supporter of green initiatives. I mean, I've been trying to get solar panels on here for a while.
Just a little while.
Yeah, just a little, only ten years.
We're getting there.
I, the questions I have is I'm assuming you can still buy straws or sandwich bags at the grocery store.
Yes.
Correct. Okay. Um, how, what's the solution for like milkshakes or slurpees? It's seven eleven, so. You know, that came to mind, but what do you do with milkshakes? How do you not have a straw for a milkshake?
There are, there are options that are nonplastic that are approved in this, like using other materials. And a lot of like I know at Wawa, they give you the option of having, um, a reusable, like you can get a reusable straw there.
And slurpees now come in clear plastic.
Yeah, and a lot of times, a lot of the, another, like. Other places in coffee shops instead of having a straw, it has like that other plastic or biodegradable cup lid that it doesn't have the straw. Um, and we did change this from what came to council last time. Just so that we could encourage the use of more environmentally friendly things. Because right now we're just talking about straws and re, um. Single use bags, but we may eventually want to expand this, but we want to kind of have a gentle startup so that people can get used to it. We can start to change habits and change.
Right, I'm trying to ask because I know this is the type of question people are going to ask.
Yeah. Yeah, so straws, it doesn't say you can't use any, any straws. It just says. Plastic straws, so there is the option for retailers to buy in bulk. And you know, that was alluded to by the green team and things that there are options made out of other things like cane sugar and all those types. There's paper straws as well.
And then obviously I've got one last question on this. Do we foresee this being an additional cost to the local businesses, which they're clearly going to pass on to anybody who. Uses the.
So at, at this point, it's most likely de minimis. The, um, this is not one of the items that we've been the leading edge on. There's plenty of topics that we've chosen to be the, the leading edge on for, for municipal inaction or action on items. This one, uh, many of our surrounding communities have already adopted this. Uh, so we're actually going to be adding on to, to, uh, a growing trend. So the, the retailer, many of our bridge street merchants have already switched over or, or, you know, or, or already did paper bags and.
I have noticed that.
And, um. Acme and Giant have taken this on elsewhere. You know, there, this is going to be nothing new to them. Uh, one of the provisions that's in this, uh, that you see is that we've, we have a, um, a date of activation of March twenty twenty four. So this gives everybody plenty of time to spend down and, um, and find new replacements for. So the, the amount of products, and again, we're only chipping away at a couple of the items that are, are on the, um, overall target list that some of the other communities have looked at, so. They're easily and readily accessible at this point. And, and they're in the same price point for the most part, so.
Okay, thank you.
Couple of questions. This, this is applicable to any commercial establishment. Not just, just stores, any commercial establishment, you know, restaurants and so forth, any, any kind of takeout or anything like that, correct?
That's the intent.
Right, okay, and. Um, I mean, did. Not that it's necessary or required, but did, did, did we have any kind of commentary or any reaction from like, say, the, uh, Chamber of Commerce? Or do we get, did we do any kind of outreach to, to the businesses to say this is coming? Or, you know, I was just wondering about that.
So I mean, I, part of that, part of the answer to that, in my opinion, is that this is part of that process is the scheduling and advertising of the, you know. Uh, last month we had this in front of us. Uh, some tweaks were proposed, so we, uh, sent it back to policy for further review. So go after tonight would be the time to, to be able to fully, uh. Inform with a, a, what is a proposed final document. Uh, to let everybody know, I do think, um, I do think our retailers pay attention and they're aware of this. Again, it's, it's not going to be foreign to them as they're seeing, uh, others around them. Uh, we have reached out to, uh, some concerns were raised about nonprofits and how this might affect them. We've reached out to the executive director of PAX. Uh, she stopped using bags, uh, plastic bags like this two years ago. Um, and there would be some argument that reusing bags would, would be acceptable anyway, but. Uh, this, this is not going to negatively impact our food show, our food bank.
Some of the nonprofits are already using, um, more environmentally friendly things.
So there, uh, to your point, though, there, there will be education needed. That's also why we put such a long runway on this. Uh, we figure nine months will give us time to, uh, get the word out in every conceivable fashion. As well as, uh, I believe Beth brought it up that allowing the restaurants to spend down whatever inventory they may have. Uh, this gives them ample time, um, for whatever they may have stocked up on, you know. So.
How, what department or organization within the borough management communicates this change? I mean, will, will we need to do in budget in the upcoming year for some kind of outreach and, and also. Ultimately, this would be enforced by what department?
Regrettably, codes. Uh, I say regrettably because it's, you know, I, I don't anticipate us being the plastic police. Uh, you know, if it's in our face, we're going to do something about it, but. I'm not having people walk into stores on any given day looking for this. I'm being candid with you. Uh, unless I'm told to do that. And I don't think that I've been told to do that. So it's, uh. It's like, uh, Mister Youall has said, we're. We're in the embryonic stage of this, so we're going to be learning, we're going to be growing, they're going to be learning, they're going to be adapting. Uh, and it's collectively, we'll get there. Uh, it's, this is the first. First thing that we have to do. So I see it, I don't see it as an expense for us. Uh, I see it as a, uh, uh, an opportunity to begin a. Well deserved long process.
Uh, cause the other thing is that, is the charging, the ten cents. You know, these businesses, if we're going to start, you know, conceivably requiring them to be in doing that. You know, if you're going to pass an ordinance, it should be something that is enforceable. And so, and you know, all of a sudden they are now going to have to fix in to their. You know, to checkout, you know, this, this charge and, and we're going to have to see about that and that they're going to have to. How that gets effectuated is, is of interest to me, but I appreciate what you're saying. Uh, Mister Borough Manager about this is a process.
And in terms of advertising, we have, uh. I think three issues of the newsletter between now and then. Uh, we've been making, uh, good use of our sewer trash bill as a means of sending out announcements. Uh, and then we obviously have our, our web, you know, our social media that we can also, uh, convey this information through. So there'll be, again, this is why we went for a long runway. Uh, to, to get as much time to, to lead into it. Anything else? Okay, so a motion and a second around the floor, uh, all those in favor.
I.
Opposed. Motion carries six zero.
Mister President, I'll make a motion to schedule and advertise an ordinance amending chapter fifteen motor vehicles. Second.
Motion by Miss Berkeley, second by Miss Webb. This is, uh, amendment to motor vehicles pertaining to East Hackel.
There's a couple of streets on there, but, uh, uh, heckle, uh, the thing that we, we agreed to work out with policy is that. Uh, currently the ordinance says both sides of Hackel. We've taken a look at that and we are going to be, uh. Public Works is going to be extending to the east Hackel Street. Give us some runway, uh, to use that term, uh, on the, the east side. We'll box it in, we'll get the, the base in. And then as part of our approved road project, when we do Emmett. Later on, when they come in and do the final wearing course, we'll have them come around and, and put that wearing course in. Uh, about the time this ordinance would get passed, so. That, that point, we'll be able to free up, uh, several parking spots on the west side of Hackel Street. Uh, and not have to worry about the passage of, uh, sanitation trucks, emergency vehicles, et cetera. So we hope it's a win-win for everybody, uh, these things. You learn as you go and, uh, we, we figured out a way to financially manage the road, uh. And, and not recognizing that, I mean, recognizing that the developer is not going to do that part of it. We're going to go ahead and do it ourselves and, uh, hopefully everybody's happy.
I'd just like to appreciate it was complicated discussion last time and I appreciate, you know, Borough Management figuring out a way to. To help with the parking.
Yeah, seems like the, the best possible solution for, for a short, you know, short term fix. Any other questions on the motion? I see none, all those in favor.
I.
Opposed. Motion carries six zero. With that, we'll move on to I T T. Mister Cermanino, are you reporting out for Mister Weiss?
Yeah, no action to report and we're, next meeting is Tuesday, July eighteenth, so come on by to hear lots of exciting updates.
Good. And Miss Dugan with finance.
The only additional item was we proved earlier, so no, we're good here.
Very good. With that, we'll open up the second and final round of public participation. Uh, members of the public who are joining us remotely via Zoom may raise their hand digitally and a member of our staff will. Uh, unmute your microphone and allow, uh, allow you to make comments to council. Members of the public who are joining us here in person may queue up at the podium. Uh, please sign in and state your name and address when you do so. Unlikely. Okay, with that, we will close the second final round of public participation. Uh, any second or final thoughts from commu- uh, on communication council participation? Okay. Uh, staff reports in your packets, we have the, uh, reports from manager, police, fire, planning. Public works, finance, human resources and recreation. Any questions on any of the items in tonight's? Uh, department reports, seeing none. We do have a need for a second round of executive session. I do not believe this is a voting, any items will be voted on tonight, so we'll need a motion to adjourn into executive session.
So moved. Second.
Motion by Miss Berkeley, second by Miss Webb. Questions on the motion? Seeing none, all those in favor.
I.
Opposed, motion carries six zero. Uh, this meeting's adjourned, uh, we're adjourning into executive session at eight thirty eight. Have a great night and we will see you next month at the Borough Council meeting, August eighth. Thank you.